Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare Hare Om Jnana Tirmindasya Nyanandana Chalakaya Chakshunamali Tam Yena Dusmaneshri Guru Venam Sri Cheethan Yamanu Vistum Sapi Tam Yena Bhutale Swayam Rupa Kalamayam Gata Ti Swapa Danti Kam Vandeham Sri Guru Sri Gurupal Kamlam Sri Gurunva Vishnamam Shchap Sri Rupam Sagrajatam Sahavana Raguna Thaan Vidam Tam Sajivam Sadvaitam Savadutam Parichana Sahitam Sri Krishna Chaitanya Devam Sri Rada Krishna Padan Sahavana Lalita Sri Vishakam Vidam Shchav Namom Vishnu Padaya Krishna Prishthaya Bhutale Shimithe Bhaktivedanta Swamini Tinnamini Namaste Saraswate Devay Gauravani Prachari Ne Nirvisesho Shunyavadi Paschati Adeshatari Ne Jayasri Krishna Jayi Tanya Prabhu Nitya Ananda Sri Advaita Gadaar Shiva Sadhi Orabhakta Vinda Hare Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare Hare Purave Gora Chandraya Radhikaya Tarale Krishnaaya Krishna Bhaktaaya Tad Bhaktaaya Namum Mukam Karoti Vaachalam Angum Langge Deegrimi Kripa Taman Langge Sri Gurum Dina Thari Namum Pramana Ananda Madhavam Sri Krishna Chaitanya Ishwaram Hari Om All right Krishna so thank you all for joining in today is twenty ninth of August The day after tomorrow is the most auspicious occasion of Balaram Purimah Balaram is actually the original spiritual master very simply Serving, surrounding and pleasing one's spiritual master one can actually please The supreme personality of Godhead Balaram is the supreme personality of Servitor Godhead Supreme personality of Godhead is Lord Krishna himself and Balaram is to be supreme personality of servitor Godhead Because Balaram serves Lord Sri Krishna in all the rassals whether it is Shanta Rasa or Dasya Rasa or Sakya Rasa or Vatsalya Rasa or Madhurya Rasa all the five rassals Balaram actually serves Krishna like that it is mentioned Alright, so let us now start with one round of chanting with with Shri La Prabhupada So let me share my screen then we will we'll chant one round Shla Prabhupada and then we'll continue with the Book which is Krishna Consciousness The Topmost Yoga System Yeah I just shared my screen Namom Vishnu Padaya Krishna Prishthaya Bhutale Shimithe Jepata Kuswam Nidhanamini Vajare Padayenidhake Apurthayne Gurkada Ramadayanagragramathari Ne Vishnu Padaya Krishna Prishthaya Bhutale Shimithe Bhaktivedanta Swamini Tinnamini Namaste Saraswate Devay Gauravani Prachari Ne Nirvisesho Shunyavadi Paschati Adeshatari Ne
Sri Adhitagadaar Shiva Shali Boul Hata Vinda Hare Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare Hare Sri Krishna Chaitanla Prabhu Nittananda Sri Adhitagadaar Shiva Shadi Boul Hata Vinda
Krishna Hare Hare Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare Hare Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare Hare Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare Hare Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare Hare Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare Hare Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare Hare Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare Hare Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare Hare Om Vishna Badharam Separi Vajaka Charaishto Shetesham Engris Abhay Charanaravind Bhaktivinanta Swamish La Prabhupada Ki Jai Mamya Ki Jai Mamya Ki Jai Bhaktidevi Ki Jai Kalshmi Marani Ki Jai Samveda Bhaktavind Ki Jai Kalivitavam Hare Krishna Mahamantara Ki Jai Samveda Bhaktavind Ki Jai Sri Rada Krishna Gopukupinatha Shama Kundara Rada Kundagirigurthan Ki Jai Muthra Dham Ki Jai Vindavan Dham Ki Jai Maya Purnarjib Dham Ki Jai Purushotham Akshetra Sri Jagannath Puni Dham Ki Jai Nantipoti Vaishnavavind Ki Jai All Glories Is Milti Bootees Hare Krishna All Glories Is Milti Bootees Hare Krishna All Glories Is Milti Bootees Hare Krishna All Glories All Glories All Glories Shishi Shiguru And Shigaur Shilpa Prabhupada Ki Jai Hi Krishna so thank you all for joining in now let us move to the study of the book Krishna Consciousness The Topmost Yoga System So you were just talking about day after tomorrow being the most auspicious Occasion of Balaram Purimah so we can purify our consciousness by hearing about Krishna by speaking about Krishna and Balaram By speaking about the wonderful pastimes of Lord Sri Krishna the various demons Killed by Balaram and Krishna so in this way we develop Remembrance of Balaram we develop remembrance of Krishna and in this way We purify our consciousness as we doubt tell our thoughts more and more in hearing and glorifying Lord Sri Krishna Lord Balaram Shishi Rada and Krishna and Mahaprabhu and Panchatatwa in this way when we are Thinking and speaking about the supreme personality of Godhead then that that is the That is a means and that is also the end that is why they said That that is both the sadhana as well as the sadhya what is the sadhana sadhana is the process What is the process to remember the Lord Shravam Kirtanam Vishnu Smaranam Archanam Mandanam Dhasim Sakyam Atmanivadanam And what is the sadhya the sadhya is also to chant the Hare Krishna Mahamantara to remember the Lord always and to never Forget the Lord right we are on chapter four this chapter is entitled the goal of yoga what is the goal of yoga what is the goal of Yoga the yoga is what does it describe here is the best of yoga is bhakti yoga and what is the goal of bhakti yoga the goal of bhakti yoga is Smartabhyasatatam Vishnu Vismartabhyona Jatuchit Sarve Vidi Nishiyadhyashur Etyor Eva Kinkaraaha So the goal of study of scriptures the goal of life is to always remember Krishna never forget Krishna And chanting of Hare Krishna Mahamantara that we do as well as the study of Shlaprapad's books that we do the study of Bhagavad Gita Bhagavatam Brahmasmita Chetan Charitaamritta All of that what we do is to enable to always remember Krishna and never Forget Krishna so that's what it is So we were reading yesterday how you know others is not an armchair philosophy sit in one place and then we just talk huh So it is not it's not that kind of engagement right simply Of course it's sevon mukehi jivaada we engage our tongue in the service of the Lord by always speaking about the Lord By chanting the Hare Krishna Mahamantara but it does not end there right because When we are chanting Hare Krishna we are asking to be engaged in the service of the Lord So whenever we get some service we should engage our senses in the service of the master of the senses That's why Prabhupada was saying it is not an idle society it's not an IDLE Society so we have sufficient engagement in terms of Study of Shlaprapad's books chanting Hare Krishna Mahamantara preaching the messages Of the supreme personality of Godhead making garlands making boga offering for the Lord Doing parikrama the having going on parikrama to various dhams Right engaging in book distribution all of these services are there and we engage in these services And we pray early in the morning to be engaged in the service of the supreme personality of Godhead so this is the goal of life so let's continue reading devotees can raise your hands Sorry about my voice you know suddenly I have just sneezed in a couple of times and my throat is Kind of lost my voice but I hope I'm audible to everyone and sufficiently loud alright Rishabhanu Kanya Mathaji please go ahead simply find out how Krishna conscious you can be Very beautiful line so can you start from there Mathaji yes Hare Krishna Rishabhanu Kanya Mathaji what happened to you yeah Mathaji please unmute yourself
Hare Krishna Dandvathpranam Mathaji
Hare Krishna Dandvathpranam yes
Simple find out how Krishna consciousness you can be if you want to be earlier peace If you want to be happy then develop Krishna consciousness and the beginning is to develop attachment for Krishna The process which we have prescribed Prescribed is chanting and dancing before the day is and offering prasadam spiritual food This will make you more Krishna consciousness The yoga system as it is described in the Bhagavad Gita is different from the Bogas yoga system which is going on in the west these days And the yoga system which have been introduced into the west by so-called yogis Are not bona fide yoga is difficult the first thing is to control the senses that is the position of yoga yogi He is not allowed to indulge in the sex life if you indulge in intoxication if you indulge in meat eating And if you indulge in gambling and sporting all nonsense you cannot at the same time become a yogi I was astonished when I when a yogi came here having advertised advertised in India that you can be A yogi even though you may be addicted to drinking this is not yoga system this is not standard You can call it yoga but it is not the standard yoga system
Hi Krishna thank you Mathaji Yeah so this is not the process of yoga system right no meat eating no gambling no intoxication no illicit sex These are the four regulated principles that allow a person to actually become a human being Right to become a yogi is a much higher stage right first of all we need to come to the platform of actually being a human being Otherwise we are just two-legged animals there are four-legged animals And there are some two-legged animals whose consciousness is like that of an animal although having got a human form Right so Prabhupada was saying was astonished when a yogi was actually addicted to drinking right That means a person is not even a human being so how come yogi can be accepted as a Yogi because these four following of these four regulated principles actually enable one To come to the platform of being called a human being and then one starts chanting Hare Krishna Mahamantara then one engages in A B C D square And then when engages in the process of bhakti yoga one actually becomes the you know One enters into the path of actually following bhakti yoga Isn't it otherwise simply but someone who is not even following the four basic regulated principles How can he ever be accepted as a following bhakti yoga principle right he cannot be called as a yogi at all right like that Yeah alright okay and then now Prabhupada is going to explain here Kalay Dosha Nidhe Rajan Asthi Ekon Mahangunaha Kirtanath Eva Krishna Shya Mukta Sangha Param Brujay Right Kalyuga is full of falls so it's very very difficult to focus on one thing in Kalyuga Because the mind is always restless Chanchalami Manakrishna Ramati Balavadridam the elephant The mind is like an elephant it's very difficult to control the mind The mind is wavering and running here and there it is easier to control the wind than to control the mind So how is it possible to be able to focus or pay attention on the super self or the Vishnu who is there in the heart are very very difficult because the senses are so uncontrolled So how do we manage in this age of Kali where everything is degraded right and then Kirtanath Eva Krishna Shya Mukta Sangha Param Brujay Simply by chanting Hare Krishna Mahamantara we can doubt tell our senses in the service of the Lord Just like a chariot example is given by Shri La Prabhupada Prabhupada explains How the five senses are the five horses and then the The reins is the mind huh and then the the driver is the the intelligence So with the help of the intelligence we have to control the mind and how do we train the intelligence by study of scriptures So only a human being can study scriptures animals cannot we cannot expect animals to Study scriptures so human beings study scriptures they purify their intelligence They use their mind and their senses in the service of the Lord otherwise Manasasthaan Indriyani Prakriti Stani Karshati one is struggling in this world with an uncontrolled mind and thereby misdirected sense Bhakti yoga to control the senses not by artificially repressing the senses But by engaging the senses in the service of the supreme personality of Godhead Alright so let's let's start reading this paragraph the yoga system is especially difficult For this age who wants to read okay okay I see some hands up yeah Priyanka Mathaji go ahead The yoga system is especially difficult for this age
The yoga system Hare Krishna Mathaji
Hare Krishna yes
The yoga system is specially difficult for this age in Shrimad Bhagavatam we understand that yoga means to concentrate On one's attention on the super self Vishnu he situated in your heart And in order to concentrate your attention you have to control the senses The senses are working just like infuriated horses if you cannot control the horses of your carriage it will be dangerous Just imagine that you are seated in the carriage and your horses are so furious that they are dragging you to hell Then what is your position the yoga system means to control these senses The the senses are also compared to the serpents the serpents does not know who is its friend and who is its enemy It bites anyone and as soon as the serpent bites the result is death Similarly if the uncontrolled senses work in their own way then you should know that you are in dangerous position
Hare Krishna thank you Mathaji very beautiful analogy right given by Prabhupada The the Kala Sarpa like that the serpent The analogy of a serpent is given both in relation to time Kala Sarpa because just like the passage of time is like a is like a serpent actually when the serpent bites Then you know it's only a question of time right few seconds until a person dies And also here the serpents are also compared to the senses also Right because the serpent does not know who is a friend who is an enemy that any person who comes across if the serpent comes Right the serpent is going to just bite and the person is going to die similarly Our senses are also uncontrolled senses they don't know what is right what is wrong What are the activities to that to engage in the senses for and what are the things to not be done Because they work in their own way then it is as dangerous as a serpent because it becomes poisonous right That's what it becomes because somebody who cannot control his senses is just like It's just like uncontrolled senses means he himself does not know when he is going to get angry Or sometimes you know he becomes very depressed or sometimes he becomes you know very elated very happy etcetera Does not have any control over his emotions because his mind is not controlled so like that Okay let me share my screen we can continue reading on this aspect by Prabhupada Ranganathan Prabhu you can go ahead it has been said that from there
Hare Krishna Hare Krishna Dandvathpranam Mathaji It has been said that when one becomes too sensual he loses his temper he loses his identity He forgets himself infuriated by the senses a man will attack even his Children even his daughter therefore for those who are advancing in spiritual life Not only for them but for everyone the sastra scriptures say that you should not Sit in a secluded place even with your mother even with your daughter or your sister Why because the senses are so strong that if they become infuriated by you infuriated you will forget Whether she is the mother sister or daughter
Hare Krishna Yeah thank you Prabhu Hare Krishna thank you Yeah so that is why because see sometimes even a sober person can get very angry Depending on the situation depending on what he is thinking depending on what he is reading Depending on what input we are getting according to the according to the time that we spend right So it is said we are the average of five people whom we spend our time with So sometimes we have to mingle with our relatives sometimes some you know so-called our School friends or college friends union reunion etcetera etcetera So when we go there we meet all those people right it is like you know we're meeting them after so many years and we just think that you know One day mein kya hota hai and it's okay let's spend some time and come back Right but we have to be very careful are we taking their association or are we giving our association Right it is okay you know to not be contributing in every situation so we can be part of a group Even in our office that we can be part of a group but we need not be influenced by all the people of the group We have to be careful whom we are allowing ourselves to be influenced by right that is why it is very important To act as per the guidance of guru shastra and sadhu right even when you are temporarily in an association which is not very uplifting One can be patma patra idaivam vasara Krishna mentions in Bhagavad Gita One can be like a lotus leaf although in the water it is still untouched by the water Right that is what we have to be very careful whom we are giving our heart to what kind of association we are actually taking Because it is going to it is going to affect our consciousness whatever association we are taking it is going to Influence the way we behave influence our next days early morning chanting etcetera it has a long term impact like that Okay let's continue reading now we have Karpa Gavali Mathaji go ahead You may say
Thank you Mathaji
From there yeah
Thank you Mathaji Thank you Mathaji I am alright Mathaji do prayers thank you Mathaji
Hi
You may That this may be true only for some foolish persons but sastra says No you should not sit in a secluded place even with your mother sister or daughter Because the senses are so strong and even though you may be very moral you may be still attracted by sex Our position in this world our suffering in this world is due to the body This is this body is the cause of all miseries and the ultimate goal of life should be to get out of this material body And be situated in the spiritual body this is a foreign atmosphere the soul is free spiritually But it has been conditioned by this material atmosphere and the body is that of this matter Thank you Mathaji shall I continue
Hare Krishna no no Mathaji thank you so this is a foreign atmosphere so we are not We are not temporary beings who are trying for a spiritual experience we are we are spiritual beings Who have now been put into a temporary existence because of guna and karma So we are conditioned by this material atmosphere like we discussing Prabhupada gives this example right when when we get into a body of a pig Then we act like the pig we completely enjoy eating stool because the body becomes conditioned To the particular or sorry the soul becomes conditioned to the particular body That the particular soul is taking because of the past guna and karma that is why even you know sometimes It is said Arjuna also asks right by what is one propelled to commit sinful acts Although one does not want to do those sinful acts it is our past memories and influences That actually make us do some things which we know is wrong but we still we are We are we are pushed by our senses by our mind to do those things although we know at an intelligence level Or at a knowledge level that I should not be doing this why because it is based on our past impressions what we have created Right so this body is matter and this is a foreign atmosphere so we cannot be very Sure that you know at all times I my mind will always be within my control That is why in all circumstances we have to adhere to guru sha guru shastra and sadhu what is prescribed So that we can be safe in all situations when we act